So, before we get started.
Yeah.
Down again. TV's down. That's okay. Before we get started, just so you know, Mr. Dillon thought it would be a good idea that we don't even meet tonight. I mean, COVID is on the rise and Betty, you know, we're not on TV, right? I mean, Betty has some serious medical issues, asthma, things like that, and she really can't take a chance. Greg had some little minor surgery today. I'm saying that since we're not on TV. That's why he's not here. But, you know, we're trying to limit our meetings to once a month instead of twice a month because of this. And I agree with... Okay. So, I'm here and there's just voice, so, all right. Well, I guess that... No voice now. So, and I agree with Mr. Gerard earlier that said that we need to conduct these meetings in a more normal fashion, that we're not going to, due to what's going on in this country, we need to really be concerned about people getting out of hand. So, I want to do the best I can to handle it that way. All right. Let's... I already have anything, or?
Yeah, I'd like to have the chief speak for...
Oh, we do have Paul? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Stacy Dragon, 209 New Brook Street.
Hold on, Stacy. Say it again, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
That's okay. I said, Stacy Dragon, 209 New Brook Street.
Stacy, hold up one minute.
Okay.
Merle, can you find out if... Because I'm getting all kinds of texts. Is he in this meeting that he could show at another time, or is we're not going to be able to even show this meeting?
He's not sure. It's... He's recording it, but he's not sure if it is recorded. Could be the problem with the car.
All right. So, people are saying that it is playing, so let's just... What I... I'm just trying to let council know what's going on. Okay, Stace?
Okay. Mr. Divine, I understand you have a question for me.
The question I have for you was...
Oh, wait a minute. Let's start not going off the rails here. Stacy, usually, usually you ask... You don't go to council people. If Mr. Divine wants to answer a question, he can.
Okay.
If he doesn't want to, please direct everything to me.
Absolutely. Does any... Does Mr. De Giuseppe... Does anyone on council have any questions for me this evening?
Well, Stacy, what you're talking about is, I was only going by what Mr. De Giuseppe said as council president. I brought up an idea to have the lights put on at the baseball fields, so that way people could use the baseball fields during this time with COVID, because people were locked in. And I thought that having... Being in the North Ward, having the baseball field and the lights on, that it would be great for, you know, the people, for their mental health, physical health, just the idea to have somewhere to go that would be lit. And Mr. De Giuseppe said, "It's not our call as council, it's up to Little League." So, I was reaching out to you through Facebook, because that's the only way. And when I couldn't get in touch with you, then I put a post out there, "If anybody is in contact with Stacy Dragon," whatever, because she blocked me. So, if she could give me a call, I just want to ask her this question. So, the question is, "Are you okay with us using the lights at Little League?"
Okay. So, to address that question, I'm going to go a little bit into detail. Normally, Mr. Divine, when someone on this council would like to reach me for something, I get an email or I get a phone call asking me to attend a meeting. I don't normally do backroom deals. Everything that goes on with you guys is done here in front of all of you. So, with that being said, I'd appreciate it if we didn't use Facebook or things like that. Treat me as a professional and bring it to my attention and have me attend a meeting. Now, with all of that being said, it is my understanding, and has been my understanding, since Little League decided to cancel its season, that no, there will be no lights turned on, because that complex is closed. The complex is closed by the direction of Mr. Dillon due to COVID-19. The reason we didn't have a season is because we got a stack of papers this high via email with Governor Wolf's directives. And we got an 11-page directive from Little League on sanitation, bathroom situations, children wearing masks while playing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Since we made that call, the board made that call, not to have a season, it was decided that the complex was closed and it would not be maintained. Financially, volunteer-wise, we just could not follow the directives. So, I'm a little confused, because I believe I've spoken to other people on council in general over this time period, that all of you are aware that the complex was closed. So, I'm not sure why this would have even come up. Secondly, or sorry, in the third situation, the complex isn't being maintained. To have people out there walking around, there's hills, there's gullies, there's holes in the outfield, numerous holes in the outfield. They fill with water, there's no amount of field dry that's ever going to fix that situation at the moment. So, that seems to be a problem. I know there's a part-time gentleman out there scraping the fields right now to get the grass off of them, but quite honestly, we need so much dirt that that situation is like lipstick on a pig. Whole nother situation. In addition to that, I'm kind of confused as to why the fields. The Borough just invested a ton of money lighting up the walking paths. We have multiple benches down at the Wharf, if you wanted to sit outside and have a chat or if you wanted to go for a walk. I was confused as to why the ball fields. You did just explain that to me, because it is in your work. I noticed during that Facebook fiasco that people had mentioned that, well, they were afraid to walk the path. They were concerned for walking the path. If that's the case, I think the situation here needs to be, rather than walking on a baseball field, maybe discussing upping our police department and full-time officers if our residents are afraid to walk a path. And most of all, it's 30 degrees outside. Who is walking on an open field in 30 degrees? But the final one is, our bathrooms are winterized. The Borough workers come out, they turn off the plumbing, they turn off the water, they pour a chemical into it so that the lines don't freeze. If you're out there for two hours walking, you cannot use the restroom, you cannot wash your hands. There's no one to sanitize the bleachers that you're recommending these people sit in. There's no one out there to supervise the situation. The pizza place across the street gets a huge problem with the teens on the playground. The residents over there are constantly calling the cops. There has to be a better way. There has to be a better way. So, now, with the directive to that Facebook post, there's never a need for a council person to put a Facebook post up in that way. I'm a grown woman, I don't respond to childlike threats, and I don't play backdoor games. Didn't appreciate you using my name in order, in an attempt to stir the pot or get attention. Mr. De Giuseppe did not throw me under any bus. He was asked, "Who was responsible for the lights?" I am the face of Little League, because I'm the one that gets up and speaks. It's a board decision. But the board cannot make a decision if the complex is closed and this group sitting in this room did not vote on opening it. So, again, I don't understand the reason for it. I know it was someone suggested to you to do this, to open it up, to sit in the bleachers, to basically leaving them unsupervised. I don't quite understand why this needs to happen in December or January. Is the plan to have kids playing ball on the field and then Mrs. Smith walking in the outfield, possibly breaking an ankle and becoming a liability or lawsuit? There were 23 screenshots to this Facebook post, even after I suggested to everyone who brought it to my attention, "Please don't respond, please don't respond." Basically, foot prizes. The more that you keep putting into it, the more it keeps floating to the top, it gets attention. It's ridiculous. I don't need it. I'm a volunteer, I take what I do very seriously. So, I'm going to address some of the remarks that were in this very briefly. There were people who asked for new programs. When the rec board is created, anyone out there who asks for those programs can direct that to them. There were people who asked about using the press box. The press box is colder outside. It's colder in that press box than it is outside. It is cinder block walls, it's not insulated, it is not heated. No running water, no restrooms. There was a lady who discussed, a friend of mine who said about, she needs a place to have cross scout meetings.
Can I just say something, not to interrupt you?
Sure.
I mean, I really... I'm not one to go on Facebook, I really don't care what's said. I mean, I know my name's always brought up. I don't even know if council wants to keep dealing with this about Facebook, or... I don't know where you just want to go with this.
Well, can we have a chance to finish so I could talk to her?
Yeah, all right, Stace. Can you get...
Okay. So, let me just end this with, you know, getting over all of that. The answer is obviously no, because the council has not approved the complex to be open. But I did want to give a boost to our registration. If the parents go to bristlesports.com, they can register their child. We are eligible again for the T-Mobile grant, which if you are low income, free lunch or reduced lunch, your child will get to play for free. If you already applied for the grant last year, your grant will carry over. You just have to make the determination whether your child is changing a division, which would change the price. If you are not in any of those categories but struggling, please come talk to us or reach out to us at bristlesports@comcast.net. We will make some sort of accommodation to get your child playing. We never leave a child out.
The only thing I would like to say, I'm going to just couple things real quick. One, when this was brought up, all I said was, "You guys own the lights," am I correct?
Correct.
The Borough doesn't own the lights.
That is correct.
Okay. The complex is closed?
Correct.
For the governor and for Mr. Dillon?
Correct.
I don't even know if that complex... I know you're doing registration, but I don't even know if that complex is going to be open this year. We're hoping it is.
Right.
We can't guarantee anybody right now that they're going to say, "You can continue sports." We're waiting to see what the high school does. I talked to Mr. Chicoletti regarding the fields. We were going to put in some funds to school board and the Borough. Why the fields were closed, we're going to... We brought a company in from Newtown, I think, or somewhere that does nothing but fields to try to get them half decent, so when Leo takes over in March, since it's been shut down so long. So, what you see right now is the guy that works for us part-time, he used to work for Nishamity. He's supposed to be pretty good at what he's doing. He's trying to get him to a point where, you know, over the winter, which we never dealt with this before. So, we're doing the best we can, but come March 1st, Mr. Polanski will take over like he always does and get ready for the school and everybody else. But I agree, there are walk... Our walking path is well lit up if anybody wants to walk at night. If we want to sit on benches, you can go down the river, it's well lit up, people can sit down there and have a conversation. I think by putting the lights on invites kids, and I think that's great if we didn't worry into COVID, that the kids have somewhere to go. But besides that, I'll... The only thing I said was, "It's your decision."
Okay. So, let me start with the first part, Stacy. That you get offended that somebody reaches out to you on Facebook. I think where it started was this. Did you have a conversation with Mr. De Giuseppe after that?
I was invited to the last meeting and could not attend in regards to this.
So, the question I asked you was, "Did you have a conversation with Mr. De Giuseppe?"
In regards to him saying about me being the one in charge of the lights?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. So, what was the conversation about that you spoke to him about?
He invited me to this meeting.
For today?
To discuss... Well, it's the last meeting, but to discuss it.
Okay. So, let's go back and answer this question. In the year 2021, a lot of people deal with Facebook and social media when you're not friends with somebody and don't know their email or their phone number. So, what you do is you just reach out to somebody, and I don't think that I put anything out there, except I personally messaged Stacy, "If you could give me a call about this situation, I just want to get the okay, I want to see where you stand." But when you don't respond to it, like, to me, that's very professional, not to respond to somebody who is reaching out to you, because you're in charge of a particular area that the council president made you responsible for. He's the one who threw your name out there, that it's not up to him, it's not up to this council, it's up to you, because you run Little League and you guys own the lights. What is so wrong about that, making that presumption to reach out to you?
I'm going to be honest with you. I had already had a conversation prior to you reaching out with an invitation to this. My phone number is on every piece of Little League document that's out there. That's my personal cell phone number.
It doesn't answer the question.
I am going to answer your question.
Do you... Wait, is it my job... Listen, is it my job to make sure that I find... Do I got to use your business email, or I got to use your personal email?
Mr. Divine, my phone number is on every Little League document.
Because I know that you're very professional and you take this series. All that I asked you to do, Stacy, I let you talk, Stacy.
So, if you can search me on Facebook, you can stop all the time.
I let you tone it down a little bit.
Stacy, I let you talk the whole time, I didn't interrupt you once.
Well, you're asking me a question I'm trying to answer.
I'm not asking your question, it's a rhetorical question, because it's already done, because I'm making a point. The point is, the point is, if somebody reaches out to somebody in a social media aspect... You are not, you know, you're not somebody that... I would feel that I would have to be so professional that I could reach out to you on Facebook and say, "Stace, what is going on with the lights? Is this something that's okay that we could use the lights?" Because this is the Borough, right? This council, I thought, was responsible for that, and we could make that decision. It was brought by the council president that it wasn't up to this council, it was up to you, because you own the lights. So, wouldn't just a regular, I mean, a regular thinking person go, "All right, let me reach out to Stacy..."
I think that's what...
"...since she runs the... Since she runs the lights." And then I reach out to you, not once, twice, no, nothing, right? And then you block me from Facebook for whatever reason, because I don't know. What reason would you have to block me?
Can I answer now, or are we still rhetorical?
If that makes you feel better, if you get your feelings hurt, that's fine.
Okay. No, my feelings aren't hurt.
Well, then just answer the question.
I think the whole question came down to is that I was telling you that you can't use the lights. That's what this whole thing's about.
Because...
It's always about me.
No, it's... Ralph, it's what you said.
But let me answer.
Yeah, Stace.
Let me answer. So, I'm going to be honest with you. I watch what goes on here, and there was no way I was going to answer you on social media and have whatever I said in that message put on blast. I was already invited to attend this meeting, to speak publicly in front of everyone, so there's no mixed words. Take it however you want to take it, but that was the reason that I didn't answer you, because I was already attending the meeting to discuss this.
So, that's what I'm saying. So, you already had a conversation with Ralph to know that there was an issue. That's what I'm saying. Yes or no?
Yep, yes.
Yes, that's all. Well, that's the point.
After the fact, yes.
The point is, Ralph is the one that put you in this situation.
There's no situation.
There is a situation. All you had to do is respond.
Who did not address council and ask for the use of the fields in which the complex is closed. I am letting you know, no, we're not turning on lights on a complex that is closed.
So, it's up... That's what I'm saying. So, it's up to you. So, how much money does the council give to Little League?
I have no idea off the top of my head.
You are the person that runs Little League. How much money do we give you?
Tony, did you get permission to open the complex?
I don't think we got that.
How much money do we give you as a council for Little League?
I have zero idea, I'm not the treasurer.
All right. We had it.
Well, this is the point. You come here and you want to attempt to make somebody look bad, and I'm just telling you, this is the reason why, and you don't accept it. You're looking at the wrong person.
Who am I attempting to make look bad?
I think that you're attempting to make me look bad, like I went out of my way to try to embarrass you, which I didn't.
No. You went on Facebook and acted like a 12-year-old, but that's a whole nother conversation.
Wait, let's talk about that. A 12-year-old that blocks people...
I discussed it, there is the answer.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Thank you. Stacy? Lorraine, what do you have?
I just wanted to say that the Borough, the people that are working for the Borough that are taking care of our lights that go out and everything that's been going on, everything's getting done within, like, hours of me calling. And I just want to thank everybody for not skipping a beat since George has left, Kevin Everett, and the whole crew. They've been amazing, and I'm really happy about that. I just want to bring it to everyone's attention that Green Lane, there's a lot of speeding on Green Lane. There was the police sign was up for a while. It didn't seem to help. And our chief would like us to contact our representatives to ask if we could have... What is it called? We want to get...
Radar?
Radar. We want to get radar. So, if you can contact, like, our state representative and see if they can get radar, then we would be able to, you know, check the people driving. So, that's it.
Johnny, what do you got?
Okay. I am going to respect the request that you guys made, and I will skip the first part of my thing I was going to talk about and just go directly into the issues that I have. So, the first, the first issue that I have was just talked about, because I just wanted to see if you were able to talk to Stacy about the lights, which clearly Stacy knew about the lights. And, you know, I guess she felt that she would come with a bunch of reasons why she wouldn't be able to respond to me on a social media post about a simple question, which I don't understand what the big deal was, to answer a simple post. And for the record, people that share with me in private, stays private. People that share with me in public, remains public. So, that, I just want to put that on the record. Now, the only thing that I do want to talk about is, our residents, there are people that believe that they're getting 11% increase in their taxes. And I made up...
Decrease. You mean decrease.
Oh, yeah, decrease in their taxes, I apologize. Decrease in their taxes. So, I just made up a couple sheets to try to explain it, so everybody understands. So, we're going to take a... I don't know if the camera's working or not. If it is, great, if not, then you can just listen to it. So, a sample tax would be, that we would have a home tax of $4,000. So, with that $4,000, we decided that 65% goes towards the school district's tax. The other 35% would go through to the Borough tax. Is that fair to say, Mr. Dillon?
No.
What would it be?
The county gets taxed.
No, I understand that, but I'm just talking about in relationship to ratios. 65% of our taxes would be...
No, it's not 65, 35.
As I said, 65, 35.
It's not 65, 35.
All right. Well, what is it? You used that number before, that's why I used it.
No, I didn't, and I never used that number.
You want me to find that again for you?
It's... You're not including the county tax.
I'm not, I'm just talking about, we're looking at it as a ratio.
All right, go ahead. You handle it your way.
Thank you.
Do your math.
All right. So, from that $4,000, 2,600 of it would be a school tax. Only 1,400 would be the Borough tax. So, the 11% that we're saving, right, the 11% that we're saving is just on the Borough side. We're not saving on the total tax. We're only saving on the Borough side, which would be 1,400 in this case, which comes down to, when you do the math, it comes down to $154 a year that you're saving, which is about $12.88 a month that we're saving with the 11%. And this is due to the sale of the skating rink. Okay? But what we're forgetting to mention is that we still have to pay, like, even though they're saying that we're getting a decrease, we still have to pay an extra $5 every year that we have to petition the county for. So, there's another approximately $360,000 a year that we have to tax our residents on top of what we can normally tax them. So, an extra $5 goes every year. So, that's, that's in there every year. The second is, in recent times, our sewer bills have doubled. Okay? So, our sewer bills have doubled, and it's been a couple of years since anybody on this council has even seen a sewer bill or anything, a folder or any type of paperwork that tells us what's going on with our sewer authority. And then, thirdly, we're passing a budget that is still not balanced. We still need to pay $183,000, and this is what we just talked about in the background. We still got to pay $183,000 towards last year's minimal pension obligations from last year. This year, we're also going to be underfunded, we're not going to be able to fund it. So, all these things go into... We're not really getting any tax decrease. So, I just want to make that clear to people, because for some reason, if people think that they're going to have some extra money to go Christmas shopping, and I just wanted to make it clear and transparent that they're not.
So, I'm not going to pack this whole thing up, but are you saying we're not saving 11% on our Borough taxes?
That's exactly what I'm saying, yes.
The tax rate's going down 11. some percent, whatever. I mean, I didn't know you were going to bring this up, or else I would have had my budget and all here, but...
Yeah.
Real estate taxes are going down about 11.5%, I believe. Not... I know it's going down, 11%, whatever. I can go get the budget and get it.
No, that's fine, listen.
But there's definitely going to be a tax decrease, because the debt service is going down significant, significantly.
All right. What else you have?
That's it.
Dave?
Yes, thank you. Thank you to Mr. Dillon and Mr. Winslow for staying after Aqua on Pine Street. That first patch job was horrendous, second patch job is much better. I would like to tell all the residents, not only on Pine Street, but any street where Apple's working, if you need a new water line, sewer line, or you want to get rid of your oil tank and put a gas line in, and your street's dug up by Apple, now is the time to do it. If you wait till the Borough, I mean, if you wait till Aqua puts a new street in there in the spring or summer, then there might be a five-year mortitorium on the road, and if you do, in an emergency, have to dig the new road, it's going to cost you a fortune, because there's a certain way that you'll have to patch that street to make it as good as new again. So, I would urge anybody right now, to take advantage of it if they need those things. And that's all I got.
Louie?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate and thank State Senator Tommy Tomlinson and State Rep. John Galaway for their participation in getting the Borough $1 million grant for the parking lot. And it is a grant, so it's not costing Borough taxpayers anything on this one. And just to put some people, you know, some people say, "Why don't we put that money in here or there, recreation or streets or something else?" This is state money specifically for riverfront communities, and we were lucky enough to be a major recipient on that. So, thank you again, thank President De Giuseppe and manager Jim Dillon, along with Gilmore, for their work on this. I just wanted to mention the Grundy Foundation, their opening of the museum got kind of postponed, but I understand they're having a slowly opening up to a different function. So, if you look online, you can find that. I saw a lot of activity yesterday with tours, that we're walking down the street from the museum. There was a bright spot in Eagles game last Sunday night during a commercial. The GEICO featured medicals, first-line workers, and one of the first ones shown was Lower Bucks Hospital's nurses and doctors and staff. So, I thought that was very nice. And I wanted to thank Steve Boji Jr. for such a good job on the day after Christmas. Someone stopped at my house and said a tree fell down on Bass Street, and it was blocking the sidewalk and the, and the street. So, I went down to, I figured I'd get a forklift or something to move it out of the way, and Steve Boji was there with the, with a... And Steve Boji was there with the, with a Baco and change saw and he was cutting it up. So I was out there and took really good care of it. And, and I just thought Steve was one of the newer hirees that we did on the last round. And I wanted to thank him for doing such a good job and let, let the council know how, how that worked out. And that's, that's all I have, thank you.
Michael.
Again, I just wanted to revisit what Lorraine said, sorry. That the borough workers have just really been awesome with getting us through Christmas and taking the time and the pride to make our town look like a Hallmark movie. You know, and then right away, they were like, Michael, is it okay? We're going to take these down. And they've, they've gone beyond some of the things that were, was left to, for our responsibility of taking some of the things down to help them. They stepped right up to the plate and, and did it all. So thank you again. I also just want to say, you know, everybody, please continue to be safe. Think about yourself, others, wear your mask, wash your hands, socially distance. I know it's tough and it's hard, but we got to keep doing this. It's not over. And for all the, the Merle, thank you for all that's, you know, I know we had some, several incidents in town. And thank you for just getting the Red Cross and everybody involved in the updates. And also, you know, Mayor, Mr. D. Giuseppe, President D. Giuseppe, and Mr. Dillon for all the updates and making us aware. And thank you for that.
Thanks, Michael.
Chief has a couple of things he'd like to talk about when he's done, and I have a couple of things.
Thank you. Just wanted to first of all, let you know how successful the Christmas food basket drive went. 25 families received gift baskets thanks to the generous generosity of the Caro family from Bristol Environmental. Once again, they stepped up and teamed up with our officers off-duty and distributed these baskets to 25 needy families, making their holidays a little bit better. We can't thank them enough. There's a couple of things that have been going on recently. Yeah, well, hopefully someday we can get it earned in here.
Absolutely.
Thank him properly. We assisted U.S. Marshals Office on a warrant execution on Second Avenue, reference to a shooting suspect wanted out of the state of New Jersey. We're also in the process of assisting Bristol Township with some connections to the recent homicide on Edgely. We continue to have our challenges with the mental health community. Officers Rivera, Webb, excuse me, Sergeant Rivera, Officer Webb, and Officer Dragon pretty much put themselves in harm's way trying to wrestle a suicidal subject out of Route 13 the other day in the middle of heavy traffic. And they did a great job. Thank you, Ms. Cullen, for your comments about the radar aspect of it. We have had several details on Green Lane for traffic. You can tell your constituents, I meant to send them an email, I apologize. But we do make the stops, but unfortunately, not unfortunately, the stops occur further down the road, so he's probably not seeing our visibility. Last night, Bristol Borough Fire Department did an outstanding job keeping that building to one building fire. Sergeant Morris and Officer Ellis were the first ones on scene. They had a quarter of a party trapped on the third floor. They entered the building, located the person on the third floor outside of the fire department, were able to get her out of the building and evacuate the first and second floor also. So it was a good team effort, and a real great team effort. And thank you, Merle, and incredible job again by the fire department with the rescue at Grundy Towers. They did an awesome job making the rescue on that. And it was a good coordinated after-the-fact job with the police fire EMS and the EMA with, and also the Grundy Tower staff, getting all those people back into their residence or removing them out to other residents as expeditiously as possible. I was very impressed with that. Apparently, the price of aluminum is going through the roof because the catalytic converter thefts all over the state is going on. So just be aware of that. If you see some type suspicious vehicle, buy a car, please let us know. As you're aware, most of you, I believe, schools are returning January 20th. The crossing guards will be back. And just a quick recap of some things for 2020. We addressed, Mr. Krotowski, 91 abandoned vehicles, you know, and something that we always try to address and we're trying to be a little bit more proactive with it. Overall, our call numbers are down, as you would expect, but the one things that do continue to stay constant is domestic violence and neighborhood disputes. And one thing that continues to rise is the mental health cause. It's a real challenge. Some of the notable investigations, the Spring Street shooting, that was put to rest with the arrest of the suspect in that. Officers arrested the individual on the Corson Street stabbing right after the crime. Same with the Buckley Street domestic violence incident. The two officers intervened in the, basically attempted homicide there. And Jefferson Street shooting in the park over there was also resulted in an arrest. Some of the proud events that I think is real important is, as the borough should be proud of itself, it held the largest and most importantly, the safest Black Lives Matter march during the time of civil unrest outside the cities, probably anywhere in the state of Pennsylvania, probably in bordering states. And that's a credit to all the borough residents and the people involved in that. And of course, the thing, as Michael said, that never goes away is the department's addressing the challenges of COVID-19. I can't believe it's probably almost a year ago when Dr. Manarano walked in here and told us about something going on in Italy and, you know, had a mask in his hand and said, hey, you guys need this. And we were like looking at him like, what is he talking about? And he couldn't be more dead-on about what was coming our way. Because of his warnings and the efforts made and through the council president and Lower Bucks Hospital relationship that we have with them, we really got ahead of the curve, I believe, on this with a lot of things, with everything down to disinfecting. Because of challenges we faced, we found out that we were on our own in this and we still are to this day on our own on this as a borough community. Not too much support from the outside, county, state, or federal, as far as I'm concerned. When it came down to disinfecting, gathering PPE for our people, coming up with a testing process, a tracking process, and dealing with the actual COVID-19 cases of our employees, we handled it all within-house. And I'm proud of our staff and I really appreciate the support of the people in this room because it really made a difference. And that's all I have. Thank you, everything for everything.
For the chief.
Can I just ask you, are you staying? Because I want to talk to you about something small.
Staying like-
Up here?
Yes.
Okay.
The only thing I would like to say, chief, regarding that Black Lives Matter is that Mars, Darien, and Quora both said that that march would go off without a hitch. And you got to give them too a lot of credit for, you know, they didn't play any games. I mean, they were serious and, you know, the meeting we had with them, it wasn't politics, it wasn't anything. They said, we're going to pull this off. And he, we believed in him. So I give them both a lot of credit.
Yeah, and I echo what you said. He's the kind of guy that stays in touch, which is good.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just on top of what the-
Dave, do you have something for the chief?
No, we moved on.
No, he waved to you.
Taylor? Hopefully I don't get stopped on Green Lane.
Just as a follow-up, follow-up to what the chief was saying. As you can see, in 2020, it was a very busy year, even though our total call volume was down. I have a hard time in remembering that we've had shootings, stabbings, and the domestic problems we have all in one year. It's kind of a sign of the times of what we're all living in. The, as the chief mentioned, we addressed 91 abandoned vehicles. I'm getting a lot of positive feedback from emails as we get better into the year relative to the outstanding actions of various police department members. And people commenting how surprised, not surprised, but how happy they are with the, with the various police officers. As the chief mentioned, last night on that fire, two of our police officers went into that building. There was, before the fire department arrived, there was a report of someone trapped on the third floor. They checked the building, found the person and, and got her out. Want to also thank the fire department for the great job that they did last night. That fire easily could have went into two or three more buildings. And with the cooperation of everybody that was there, they were able to make a good stop. Finally, the, the fire that we had at the Grundy Towers. I was very proud to be able to sit there and watch the teamwork that evolved between the police department, the fire department, Merle, the rescue squad, and getting the county down there to help us also. I mean, you were dealing with 180 people, a fire, water coming down through six floors. And just dealing with that, it was just amazing to watch how well-oiled our team operated. So I'm very happy to, to report that kind of information. Other than that, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Merle.
Thank you.
A couple of things I have. One, we've been getting calls about the clock tower that's not lit every night. And Mr. Baumgartner keeps it off for about an hour. I think there's a cost issue involved with this. And we're trying to get, I'm going to try to get a meeting with him to see if he could either change it to LED, which will save money, or to try to put some kind of a meter on it to come up with a number. Because there are people that stopped me that said they'd be willing to contribute. It's like a landmark. And I think my brother-in-law, who owns Caesar's Restaurant, is willing to take this on to see if we either raise money or find out what the cost is to keep these lights on. So it is becoming an issue because a couple of little kids stopped. Their parents called me and said, you know, the lights weren't on. And, you know, I said, well, let me talk to him. So he did say he's going to increase it to two hours a day. But to me, it's a landmark. That light's always been on, there's always been a flag flying. So I'd like to talk to Fred and see if there's a way we can work something out. The other thing is, I talked to Mr. Chicoletti from the school board, and he has formed a committee to discuss recreation. So I'm trying to set up a meeting with them over the next few weeks. And again, with COVID, it's not as easy as just, let's just sit down and talk. So I have a couple of people on council that I'm appointing to this committee to meet with them. No decisions are being made, we're just trying, this is early stage of what we're doing, to see where we're going to go in the future. If you're looking at our agenda, I mean, there are certain things that are starting in number six. They grant, these are all the casino grant applications that we were successful in getting. So the one is number six for the police radios to pay off that $89,000. The other one is to purchase a new bucket truck. Me and Mr. Dillon met with the company from the, supplied the truck last time. It's under the state bid list, so it doesn't have to go out the bid. We're looking at a new truck. The borough workers have said they want it to go a little bit higher. So instead of maybe going to get people in to do the lights at the field, we would be able to maybe change the bulbs and try to save Little Lake some money on that. So we're going to get a price on that. And we're also asking them to give us a number on what do they think our bucket truck is worth? It's, it's all that needs a head gasket or something. I mean, I'm not a mechanic. But I'm thinking if, if it's not worth much, we're giving the one truck, our pickup truck, to the school district. Let's give them the bucket truck so they could do things around the school, you know, change lights or whatever. And, you know, they might want to spend $5,000 or $10,000 to fix it, but if they do, then they have a nice truck. We were fortunate enough to get a grant for $102,000 through the redevelopment authority, which I have to abstain from because I'm on that board. Also, the truck that we're giving the school district, we're going to give them a plow and a salt spreader on the truck. So they're going to be fully equipped with a truck with a salt spreader and a plow. Because our new truck is coming with, with all that equipment on it. So I know they're very happy about that. The other thing is that there was a grant for the police vehicle that we were successful in getting, $52,326 to buy a police car that we're trying to get every year. And we backed up, the bucket truck was $102,502. The grant for the police radios are $89,776. There's also a grant to repay the Bucks County Rescue Squad replacement in their radios for $75,000. And the last thing is the $50,000 towards the demolition of Elm Street and Chestnut Street. So I don't know if anybody has any questions on any of that stuff that I just spoke about. But just to let you know about Elm and Chestnut Street, I don't know if, so you're aware, we voted to give this ground to the RDA. So the RDA, not, put everything aside, you hear from social media again, the bid documents have been prepared to take down Elm Street. We're hoping to have Elm Street demolished by the end of February. I don't know what the cost is going to come in at, but we do have $50,000 to put towards that. If the RDA will probably come up with the rest of the money, but we have to pay that. So if it comes in at 75, it comes in at 100, that money will have to be paid by the borough. So the bids were, the bids will be advertised and they are due in by February 10th. The RDA meeting is February 19th, which will probably approve the bid. And hopefully sometime in March, that Elm Street will, we're planning on doing it. Me and Mr. Krotowski met with the RDA a week ago. We want to take down Elm Street, dig out everything we have to do, get rid of everything and plant grass. It'll be open space right up to the curb. There won't be any sidewalks, there won't be anything there. So we'll have another open area for anybody to use at this time. We don't know what we're doing with it yet. And the RDA is going to reach out to the five people on Chestnut Street that own property and see if they could come up with something to see where they want it. Maybe they don't want to sell their property, maybe they're happy being there. If they are, I think the RDA is going to take everything down around them and just fix the sides of their building. So they would get, you know, the house would stand and each side of the house would be redone. So we're not forcing, and I said that from the beginning, I would never vote to force anybody out of their property. So if it comes down to it, there may only be five houses sitting there, but that's going to be their decision, not, not this council's. But again, we're not dealing with this anymore. This is all up to the RDA. They're going to award the contract for demolition on Elm Street. Elm Street will be taken down ASAP. That's something that me and Mr. Krotowski made a commitment to. And our next goal is to get Chestnut Street down as soon as possible, right behind that. So we're moving forward with both properties. Mr. Drouin.
Yeah, yeah, Drouin. Those five properties, are any of those owned by landlords or the old homeowners?
No, there's five, there's seven properties. Two are with landlords and rentals that both people are interested in selling this their property. The other five are owner-occupied.
Thank you.
So that's what I'm talking about. The five people that live there, we'd like to work out an agreement with them. Through, the RDA is going to try to work out an agreement. If they can't, then, you know, you could take down a building on each side of you and just stuck out the sites. So it's not what we want to do. But again, there's people been there a long time, they don't want to leave. And I don't blame them. If I lived there, maybe I wouldn't want to leave either. So, you know, let's see how it works out. And right now, we could take down, thank Louis, we talked, there might be like the first 12 or 13 houses on each side could come down. And then maybe there'll be two, and then maybe another five can come down. It'll probably cost more money for us to do it that way. But, you know, we have to move forward, we can. The people that live on Pond Street and Jefferson Avenue, I think, had enough in their properties. And where are the council people there? And I started this a long time ago. Them houses are coming down this year. So I could tell you that. And Elm Street, no matter, like I said, you listen to people on social media that don't know what they're talking about, but Elm Street is coming down hopefully by March. The bids are already being done and they're being accepted on February 10th. The bids are already being done and are being accepted on February 10th. Anybody else? Okay. So number three, Mr. Dillon, you have anything?
No.
Sorry.
No, nothing really. No, 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 just, just the agenda is ready for council's consideration. I don't have anything else.
Okay, so we're going to, chief, is anybody out there again for our regular meeting?
No.
No? All right, so we're going to, there's no public participation. Joe, you have anything for the, nothing? So we'll start with number three on the regular agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the council meeting minutes for December 7th, 2020, to accept the treasurer's report for November 2020, to accept the fire chief's report for November 2020, and to accept the inspection department report for December 2020.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Gerard, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the audit services by Hellman and Company for the fiscal year ended December 31st of 2020.
Second by Mr. Katroci, questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Yes. Does this company donate to your political action committee?
I don't think they're allowed. I don't know. They might. They've been here from how long?
About 14 years.
14 years.
And their prices cheaper than what they were paying back then.
Gotcha.
I don't know, maybe they do. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the annual commitment renewal for 2021 for regional households to have this wage program in the amount of $1,373.
Second by Ms. Cullen, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number six.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the resolution for the 2021 municipal grant program, police radio replacement in the amount of $89,776.
Second by Ms. Cullen, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the resolution for the 2021 municipal grant program, public works bucket truck acquisition in the amount of $102,502.
Second by Mrs., Mr. Gormly. I have one comment on this. When we met with this company the other day at the Borough Yard, they're giving us $102,502. The truck may be about 130 or 140 because they want the higher reach. So that means council will have to come up with the additional 30 or 40,000 dollars. So I don't know, we should change Lorraine's motion not to exceed 150? I don't know where you're going with that. So Lorraine, could you just?
Okay, sure.
End that to not exceed 150?
Okay.
No, we got 102. We may have to come up with 20, 30, 40, I don't know yet.
Okay.
They didn't, they, they weren't able to give us a quote.
I'd like to authorize the resolution for 2021 municipal grant program, public works bucket truck acquisition in the amount not to exceed $150,000.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Gormly, questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Yeah. Now I have a question. So I didn't have a question when we was 102, it was no problem. But we have another bucket truck that we're going to be giving to the school district. What is that bucket truck worth in the condition that it's in now?
That's what we're thinking.
That's it? Is that something that we should get appraised to see if?
Well, if we sell the truck, it's got to be put out on a municipal bid list.
Mm-hmm.
And if the bid's $800, then it's sold for $800 bucks. So there's no reason not to give it to the school district. We're trying to get a trade-in value.
Well, the only reason I'm asking, I'm sorry, the only reason I'm asking is because if, if it's worth 30 grand.
Well, it's not.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah. If it's not, then, no.
It may be worth 10, it may be worth, I don't know. But, you know, there's, there are issues with the truck, and the school may not even want it. But, you know, we're working, and we may, who knows? All I'm saying is, we want to buy this truck. It takes several months to get one, and may come in in April or May. So it's not something that we, you know, we just got to come up with the balance, whether it's 30, 40, or 50,000. So that's where we're at. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a resolution for 2021 grant program, police patrol vehicle acquisition in the amount of $52,326.34.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Gorman, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize resolution for 2021 municipal grant program, Bucks County Rescue Squad radio replacement in the amount of $75,000.
Second by Mr. Katroci, questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Is the $75,000 the total amount they needed? Or is somebody else in other municipality putting in?
Now, that's the balance that they owe.
Okay.
Just like our balance. We gave them money last time towards that, too.
Okay.
Question, any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a resolution for 2021 municipal grant program, demolition of unoccupied units on Elm and Chestnut Streets in the amount of $50,000.
By Ms. Cullen, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I just want to say that the redevelopment authority is very generous to the borough this year again. They got a million-some dollars less than they got last time because of COVID. But we were able to secure $369,614 to put towards borough projects that if we didn't get that money, and these are things we would have had to pay for out of our own pocket. So I just want you to know that relationships do matter. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, the only, the only question I have, it has nothing to do with anything specifically, I mean, that pertains to the agenda. But that fire that was over on Bass Street, I, I heard that that fire happened, led, nobody was injured. But was that a rental property or a single-family dwelling?
I don't know.
Do you know?
Mayor? It was a rental property?
I think there were four units, right? Three or four units?
Here.
The three or four units?
More or less.
Rental property.
Yeah, how many, how many units was it, do you know?
There were three occupied, and I think there was still one downstairs. It, it was either under renovation or it wasn't occupied.
And I was just wondering, I know that in that area, if it's, if that has to be gutted and they got to start over, is there a way, as a council, I know that we've done this before in the past, I'm not sure how, how it works, but that we can reestablish that as a single-family dwelling to kind of take down the density of people that live in that area? Is that possible or not?
No.
Wouldn't that be great?
No, I would just want, I'd just know when it starts over.
Why not?
We acquired, what we did before on, on a couple of those properties. We acquired multi-use, ones that were hacked up, some of them even originally. But we bought the properties.
So we had to buy them first and then?
And we...
We'd have to buy and then de-restrict it.
Gotcha.
But I don't know if you could de-restrict it forever, anyway.
Okay.
Yep, a good thought. I'd like to make this motion to adjourn.
Second by Lorraine.